This is a public hearing concerning the adoption of the General Assistance Ordinance, appendices A through D for the period of October 1st, 2018 to September 30th, 2019. This is a required ordinance required by the Department of Health and Human Services, Office for Family Independence. And I don't know what else I need to say.
Motion.
Should we open an adopted public comments?
Yes.
Could we have a motion to adopt this General Assistance Ordinance? I'll make a motion. We move to adopt the General Assistance Ordinance, appendices A through D for the period of October 1st, 2018 to September 30th, 2019. And I'll start with that and open it for discussion. Is there any discussion about this ordinance?
This is something the state is going to require right now, right?
We have to do this, so annually.
Yes, and we start with the changes and stuff.
And we're actually overdue. So it would be excellent to get this done and take me here. Do you have any other comments, Cat?
I do not.
All right, then are we ready to vote? All those in favor? And this is the form that you will sign and we'll send it to the state. All right, good. We want it to be legal. Thank you, Nick. This hearing is closed. And Mr. Osaretko is not here this evening. He has an excused absence, but there is a forum, so I call the meeting to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I'm at my right page. I'm sorry. Very beginning, very, very right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think I got this by now. Let's see. We have taken care of that. Could I have a motion to approve the consent of the general?
A motion that we approve the consent of the general, it's written.
Second. Do we need to vote if we both? All those in favor? And the next board of selectmen meeting will be Monday, December 10th, 2018, 5:30 at the West Bath Town Office. I have no comments. Do you have anything?
Just the one, I will start attending the Lower Kenny Beck River Livable Community Meeting starting this week.
Thank you. Excellent.
Looking very forward to that. And whoever's been giving me all the surveys, they were very interesting. It's going to be a very interesting committee.
Good. I'm glad that we can do that. It seems like an important round of discussions that people are having. Public comment, anything from the public? Public is silent this evening. First item of business, Representative Jay McCright has just been reelected to her position for District 51, and she's here to talk with us about our hopes and dreams for the next legislative session.
Thank you.
And hers. Yes, what are your hopes and dreams for the next legislature?
As I've done before, I like to come at this point and see what priorities people have looking forward to the legislative session and then to tell you some of the things I'm working on. So maybe I'll start with what I'm working on at this point. You may remember that I had a bill about dealing with expired marine flares. And it died a sad death. So I'm trying again. And I just met with some of the people who'd been part of the stakeholders group originally. We met again today and doing some retooling of the provisions of the bill. So that's a work in progress. It's just an evolving bill as they are. I also put one in around the waitlist on lobster licenses to see if we can address the very lengthy delays without doing too much to increase effort, find some fairness that is acceptable to everybody. I'm thinking about, I had one before to address predation on the flats. I don't know if that's, if I put a bill in, it's about if a municipality decides to do netting or some conservation area to prevent anybody from going into that area. That's anybody, clambers, wormers, the public, anybody. So I certainly appreciate any input on that. Another lobster-related one is I had a bill last time to address someone who became very ill or injured and could not fish. There's already a provision that they could have a family, a close family member who's completed the apprenticeship program fish on their license for a sad amount of time. The bill was a two-part bill, and the part that is now in law just gave more flexibility to that and clarified that, say, someone has that situation, they get a waiver for a year, and then they're back to fishing. Hopefully, it never would happen again, but say they had another situation, as long as they fished a certain amount of pounds of lobster, they could reapply. It's up to the commissioner's discretion. So the part that did not succeed was specific to terminal illness, which was the original idea that the lobsterman brought to me. What, I still need to pay my bills, what do I do? So it was a version of a medical waiver. So I'm working on that one to put in again to see if we can get that to happen. The lobsterman and I worked very hard on not having any loopholes because people, you know, there's concern that people would go around the system, and that wasn't the intent at all. It was to just give a little more flexibility. And then one that came up, you all may remember the power outage a year ago.
I have very strong memories of that.
You remember that?
Well, one of the selectmen in Harpswell brought up the idea, could a municipality with the right personnel, licensed personnel, address the downed wires? You know, towns can already address the trees or other debris, but if they're downed wires, then you're stuck. And boy, were we stuck this last time. And I know West Bath was hit again with the microburst that happened not too long ago. The generators were going all over. So I'm investigating that. I've talked to, actually Cumberland County Emergency Management to get an overview of what their take on it is. The man I talked to said, oh, this is an interesting question. Nobody's asked this before. So that's always good. So it's, again, I'd like input on it. Is that something that you think is interesting? If it were to happen, it would be statewide. It wouldn't be specific to any particular town. And it would, again, my vision of it would be, it would be a licensed person, S-CMP or AMIRA would hire, who would do that. And the town would, my, again, this is in a drafting stage, but the town would be responsible for the payment, I would assume. But then there could, depending on the situation, it could be grant funding to reimburse. But again, this is, I'm open for a conversation. And then when I met with Christine, one of the things she brought up was the FCC, the change of rule that they're proposing that would hurt municipalities. And both Eloise Vitale, the senator, and I have been looking into that. And MMA is very much aware, hearing from municipalities all over the state, and is watching and addressing those concerns and will be doing, they do an annual policy focus. So that will certainly be one. So we're waiting for more information. If you have more information, please let me know. But that's, West Bath is not alone in being concerned about that.
And that's regarding loss of our cable franchise revenues?
Yeah, which would be a big deal.
Yeah, that would be a big deal for us.
Yeah. So other bills that I'm working on are several related to healthcare, related to the opioid crisis, to continue that work. And then, you know, the legislature is really, as I said to people as I was knocking on their doors, the polarization is true. It's not that it isn't true, but, and especially this last session, but it's also very collegial. And so there are a group of us that are working on healthcare issues to look at it globally as opposed to it like that. There would be different bills put in, but as a group, we're talking about what's the vision. And then another group that Joe Valencourt is part of, Doug Alexander, Dan Deveraux from Brunswick, the Haskell Bay Keepers, Representative DEP and DMR and me, and it'll broaden. But it's around trying to figure out a vision around aquaculture because it seems to be going piecemeal. And do we have a statewide vision? And of course, it doesn't affect the whole state, but for the parts of the state it affects. So, right, could I mention Eloise? Eloise and I have put that together, and we're meeting again on Monday. We've met several times. And probably what we're going to do is put forward a bill to create a legislatively determined task force. So it would include, like the opioid task force, it would include a bipartisan group of legislators and experts in the field. So someone from DEP, someone from DMR, somebody from the University of Maine who's currently involved with this process, Harbor Master, Shellfish Wardens, people who live at Reva, probably landowners who have their concerns about it and people...
And people from the industry.
Yes, and people who are in the industry. There's another group that's going on that I attended that the Maine put together. And that's, their focus is a little bit different. They're looking at, very focused on the social implications, where we've gotten these, this pushback from landowners, that tension between landowner, working waterfront, and they're doing things like putting together information brochures, doing educational workshops for communities to try to get people to understand what it's all about. So those kinds of things are going on today. So my question to you is, do you have questions for me? Or how do those issues sound? Or what other issues should I be working on?
In the hopes and dreams, Cat, Laurie?
Yeah.
The idea of funding for students who receive special education, especially students who need transportation out of district, those funds should go with the student and not be assessed immediately upon the arrival of said student in a town that's not expecting a huge bill.
Yeah, that's clearly an issue. And I don't remember the details, but there was, I did look forward to do exactly that. And I thought, well, that would be great for West Bath.
It would be great for a lot of small towns and for the students and their families because who, I mean, it's just not right that people should resent kids moving to town because they cost so much. And families who need the most support shouldn't be made to feel unwelcome. And I'm very concerned about that. Not just the tax implications for us local folk, but for the hospitality issues of the families.
I agree. I used to work as a crisis clinician at the Crisis Unit, Suitses Crisis Unit, and this was a hospital diversion program. So kids came, it was supposed to be a seven-day program. They were from seven to 18 or 19. And there was a child there who'd come from Massachusetts. And it was a slightly different situation, but the mother couldn't quite believe how we do it in Maine, that where the responsibility falls for the cost is different in different states.
Yes.
The other related thing is, I know Adam spoke to me about an initiative of small towns getting together to try to get a larger percentage, not related necessarily to this issue, but in general, so that they would get a larger share of the education funding. It wasn't a huge difference, but it was, it would make a difference in the town.
I think from what I've understood from the people who are developing that bill, that they have one that is at least in development. So I'll be keeping my eyes on that. If it looks promising, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
But if I had my choice between the two, it would be the funding would go with the kid.
Yeah, okay.
For me?
Yeah, I agree.
Revenue sharing, only?
Revenue sharing, yes.
And just maybe go back where it might used to have been? And keep cutting and cutting it?
Yeah.
And just in general, the school funding, the so-called 55%? And I think that bill you're referring to was to make these towns, nobody's given any money. Elewuson got the funding first.
Yeah, minimum receivers. Yeah, exactly. I think you're right.
That's quite a term, minimum. They should call it zero.
Yeah. Well, I, by maybe being naive, but I'm hopeful that we're entering a new era. I served on the tax committee last year along with judiciary, and we worked very hard to improve revenue sharing. Not as, not back to where it was, which would have been what I would have liked to see, but we didn't cut it, which was what the effort was. Homeset exemption is another one that we did some improvement on, but I'm hopeful that we'll do more on that. You know, being physically responsible, but not putting all the burden on towns and property tax owners.
Out of that, I would say any program they propose that shifts the cost from the state to the local level, and it's a mandated program. Thank you, Agusta.
Yeah. Yeah, mandates are no longer.
No, normally they start out funding it, and a few years later decide, well, let the local people fund it now on their property taxes.
Yeah.
Absolutely. It's got to be a little more accurate.
Well, it's, you know, the issue is when you talk to people in towns. In West Bath, taxes come up quite fast. The debt funding issue, special ed, especially, not as much now because it's not as fresh.
Right.
But it will be again. And healthcare and polarization is what I heard the most about. We're sick of it.
Well, the taxes, there's no so-called commercial basis in the town really. So it's going to fall on households, your home taxes.
Right. And it's, it's...
And one little change can make a big difference.
Absolutely. When you're thinking about a family, absolutely. No road issues?
There are always road issues.
Road issue town.
You're going to solve Birch Point, right?
And Sumi.
And Sumi on Thunderfrost, right?
Yeah, we've worked very hard, haven't we? In terms of the culture.
Yeah, yeah.
And erosion of Birch Point.
The high tides are undermining the end of the town road at Birch Point. So if you could stop high tides, perhaps a law against high tides, especially storm surges, that would be very good.
Should we address sea level rise in general?
Well, stop it, yes, of course.
Is that something that any mitigation will help with through?
There are few places in town that are going to, if the predictions are at all accurate, they will require some roadwork. And of course, with the Army Corps being very interested in anything that has running water through it, which is not swampy stuff, that always is going to have an impact.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got a lot of little tiny streams.
Yeah. Well, one of the, one of my colleagues who, she actually lives in New York, is interested in establishing a new committee in the legislature that would be on climate change. Or you could call it ocean acidification, sea level rise. I don't think there's going to be that because of funding. But there's a lot of work being done on the issue. But, you know, it's affecting everything. The water temperatures, sterilization, all of it. So it's a bigger issue than Birch Point, but Birch Point is an example of it.
Yeah. And most people are going to feel the effects of the changes in small but important ways.
Absolutely.
Like when you can't get across your road in a big tide.
Absolutely. And it's happening. I'll do my best.
Okay.
Do you have any feedback about this, the shellfish idea, the predation conservation? It would be the idea of, do you know Dr. Beals? Brian Beals has done the predation studies and he's done netting and, or boxes, different strategies. It's based on that concept, but that by itself is not the only issue, obviously, but with green crab coming and going, that's an issue. And we've got records, and it doesn't help with that.
No.
Well, I think any kind of a conservation effort made, in most cases by the shellfish harvests in the town, if they do that, resea, whatever, it shouldn't be allowed to be disturbed.
Yeah, yeah.
The same day, the next day, it's foolish to resea a place and then it might break down.
Yeah, yeah. Well, in that, I presented a similar bill last time. The opposition, of course, as you can expect from wormers.
Well, they should be able to find a happy medium where they own a certain number of acres a year or whatever, so they don't close whole coves.
Oh, absolutely. And that's, we worked on it in committee and made it specified areas. If it's netted, if it's marked off, if it's, there has to be signage. And one of the pushbacks was, well, towns don't want to do that. Well, then they don't have to. It's not making anybody. But if you don't do the, keeping the netting clear and the signage, then there's no...
Right.
It doesn't matter. I mean, anybody then could say, well, you're not doing upkeep so we can go through. And it isn't just about worming, it's about clamming and people just tromping through. So I don't know if it is something that will go anywhere, but if towns are interested in it, I'd like to give it a try.
I think that our Marine Resources Committee would support that.
Yeah, once you've seeded, if you...
Yeah, it's very frustrating to go work a tide seeding and have it die out the next week and all the seed up on the surface, getting picked off by crabs.
Yeah, yeah. And birds. Okay. So maybe you'd come and testify?
I would.
Cool.
Okay. I've watched this. I fortunately don't dig in the mud very often, but I see people do it.
Yes. Great, thank you. And as always, anything that comes up, please stay in touch and do whatever we can.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Thank you. And any further questions, discussion? Then we can move on to the Central Main Power Company project. And this, we had visitors last meeting. And what their, what CFP is seeking at this point is right of entry to do preliminary work to see whether or not the town would grant an easement to widen the existing CFP corridor, the transmission lines. So what do you think?
I don't think they're looking to have you act on an easement tonight, although they did propose an amount of money for either the fee or the easement. But the right of entry agreement to allow them to conduct field work is pretty important to their preliminary work.
And allowing them right of entry does not, does not agree to their proposed price or even to their project?
That's correct. It doesn't signify an easement in perpetuity. It's not a transfer of ownership. It's just to allow them to enter the property for a specific purpose.
Do you think we should give it to them?
I think we should. I think we leave those towers there so that we don't all go down, only parts go down, and the other ones still do. I mean, it's all about it.
Flipping the switch.
Really, it really is. And right now, the way it's set up, what, drops them to, to West Cassett can go down, and this way it would only be half of that region, so.
It would be doing a world of good deed, wouldn't it?
It would.
Well, all those in favor, should we have a budget for a good deed?
Make a motion that we do a good deed, that we grant landowners permission, Central Main Power for right of entry. Do we also want to do the easement or just right of entry?
That's just a right of entry.
Okay, so make a motion, we grant Central Main Power permission for right of entry to the MRO 1009 for first principles of conducting environmental and preliminary engineering evaluation.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? We have you sign each of these forms, copy for us, copy for CFP. Hi, Will.
Hi, Amy.
Am I guessing we're the landowners?
I guess we're the landowners.
You sure are.
Can we just run this down, we'll take all this, we're gonna move again.
You notice every Tuesday? Now, Phelan's been up to school for the past...
It seems to go now.
The Tuesdays, though? It's gonna be Tuesdays, yeah? Okay. That's done, the Energy Committee report, Mr. Hennessy, are you prepared for this?
No, we're bored as such, no. We have two more audits lined up.
Okay.
One for Wednesday afternoon to the Town Office in the school, and one for Thursday afternoon for the Town Office in the school. And that'll give us three audits we've completed.
And the firehouse has been...
The firehouse, they did internally, so we volunteered by Emmy, pursuing all of it. Thank you very much, Ronald Lett.
Ronald Lett.
In coordination with GP.
We should write him a note. That's a great service to the town.
Oh, it is. Very much appreciated on their part.
And the Safety Committee report, I saw in my notes that, uh, you're taking that, Carly?
I'll take, I'll take the reins on this. So, uh, the Town Office staff had a meeting to decide what to do about, uh, rekeying the Town Office, and we determined that really the only major points are the outside doors and the door to the vault, which also holds our motor vehicles and cash supplies. So, we decided to rekey those two and create a new sign-out sheet to keep a log of who has keys going forward. The digital key pad will stay the same.
Okay.
If you do what's necessary to change that code, just, yeah.
Right. Just access to the inside.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, that has been taken care of, check it off the list.
Excellent. Okay. Others? Do we have any other others? I am up.
You have any?
No. Anything, Christine?
Nothing to report at this time.
Mr. Hennessy, anything other, other?
Roger, bye.
And Mr. Vale, welcome. Do you have any others? All right, thank you. Then, motion to enter into the executive session.
I make a motion that we enter an executive session pursuant to Title I, MRSA 405, 6A, for the purpose of discussing personality.
And second act, all in favor? So, we will enter into executive session at this time. Thank you.
So, you have a grant for us?
For...
Report.
Yes, yes. Thank you.